Attention and settle down the audience. I want to welcome everybody to a special joint meeting of the Health, Education, Neighborhood, Parks, Arts and Rivers Committee along with the Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Price and the Ad Hoc Committee on Comprehensive Job Creation Plan Committee chaired by Councilman Krikorian. Thank you so very much for all the members for being here and I want to state that it is a little past four and we are in the Public Works Hearing Room and I want to call this meeting to order. First, thank you for everyone for showing up for this very important legislation that we are seeking to pass, but I really want to first thank my colleague Councilwoman Nori Martinez for partnering with me on this initiative as well as express my sincere thanks to Councilmember Krikorian and Councilmember Price for engaging in this effort and understanding that while there's a significant amount of work that still needs to be done, this conversation is worth having. The United States is far behind on paid parental leave. As a matter of fact, we are the only industrialized country to not have a paid parental leave policy. This has exacerbated the inequities between male and female employees and between the haves and the have-nots in our society. And I'm not willing to wait around for Washington DC to address this problem and I look forward to working with you and all of your committees on addressing this issue for the people of Los Angeles. Studies over the past decade have shown that paid parental leave policies decreases unemployment, increases participation among women in the labor force, and most importantly creates a greater degree of parity between the salaries of men and women. Moreover, employees who receive paid leave are nearly 40% less likely to need public assistance. But, we are not here just to discuss statistics and theory. This is a policy rooted in real-world experience and felt across our city. In fact, it's felt by many of us in this very room. When I was growing up, my parents didn't have much time to bond with me or my siblings because they simply couldn't afford to. This legislation is about changing that calculus for working families like mine. This is about the expectant mother who can't take time off to rest before the birth of her child or the new parents who are not able to take some time off to spend with their newborn because they can't afford the 30 to 40% reduction in pay. This is about removing the barriers that force parents to choose between parenthood or their livelihood and about crafting policy that works for families and businesses of Los Angeles. Now, before I turn this over to my colleagues, I want to quickly go through the run of show. First, we're going to hear from Councilwoman Martinez who has joined us to discuss this issue, followed by Chairs, Councilmembers Krikorian and Chair, Councilmember Price, and then we'll move on to public comment. Then after public comment, we'll hear from Aditi Frutwalla from the ACLU of Southern California who has done some tremendous work over the years with the California Work and Family Coalition, and then we'll open up the floors to members for questions and comment. Now, if there are any recommendations for additional feedback or report backs, I would appreciate if the members could write them out and pass them along to me so I could properly read them into the record before we adjourn. So lastly, members for your reference, we've circulated and should be on your desk a working policy proposal as well as a frequently asked question sheet that you have in front of you. So, Councilwoman Martinez, thank you for joining us and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the committee, for allowing me to say a few words this afternoon. Since being elected to the City Council, I have made working women and children my priority. From raising the minimum wage to committing to building more green space for families and creating safe working environments for our working women, I choose to focus on issues that will advance the status of women and children. Advancing a paid parental leave program in Los Angeles is a critical step towards making our city a more family-friendly place for working families. I am proud to work with my colleague Councilmember David Rue on this important piece of legislation. Our current system of state and federal programs cater to a white-collar economy while leaving out low-wage workers and people of color. People who are surviving off of minimum wage can't afford to receive partial salary. By providing a full-paid parental leave, we will empower Los Angeles' hard-working mothers and fathers with the tools to be outstanding parents that they are without having to fear of losing their paycheck. We must stop penalizing women for having children. Los Angeles is such a hard place for working people to start a family. From the cost of rent to the cost of living to the cost of to support a family, this is one step forward to helping our residents live a slightly less stressful life. We all have a right to bond with our and care for our children and our family members and we need to make sure that giving our children the very best that we can when they first start off their life. I know for me that the first weeks of having a baby were incredibly difficult and it was incredible difficult and critical part of my family as we adapted to our newborn baby. I experienced postpartum depression for the first six months after my baby was born. If it wasn't for the time that I took off and my husband who was, who had actually taken off a substantial amount of time to spend time with me, I don't know what we would have done. It was incredible dark time in my personal life as we were trying to bond with our baby and deal with my mental condition after having my newborn. But of course, this isn't just a woman's issue, this is a family issue and my baby, not only did I need my husband at the time, but my daughter needed him too. I recognize that I am one of the lucky ones. I had the ability to figure out what types of programs were available for me and my family and I believe that all working women and men in Los Angeles deserve to have this opportunity as well. Awareness and access to programs shouldn't be limited to those with economic means. As I began working on this issue, I was surprised to learn that there was far too little awareness of existing programs, that the people who can least afford to lose their pay are the ones who are the lowest, who have the lowest awareness rates in the state of California when it comes to these programs. This means that in California and the Los Angeles County workers who make under $39,000 a year have the lowest awareness. We are talking about low-wage workers and workers of color. Program awareness is segregated by income levels. It's not right and it's not fair. My time bonding with my newborn is no more important than the time of a woman who makes minimum wage is able to take care, to take care of her newborn. So today, I ask you to take an important step forward in figuring out how to level the playing field for all Angelinos. By implementing a 100% wage replacement program for a paid parental leave in Los Angeles, we'll be helping the most vulnerable population use these programs so that the most, more families can bond with their babies. During this process, I know it will be a critical time for us to bring the business community into this conversation. We want to make sure that we take their concerns and their issues into consideration and we need to know what the landscape looks like, who's already doing this, and what programs benefit the most. So an economic impact or an analysis will be key to the awareness of our, to make us aware of what some of the questions that the business community has and make sure that we are being informed during the entire process as we move forward. I recognize that not all businesses will have the same concerns as others in terms of implementation. The film industry, for example, is finally back on its feet in California, but they are unique in how their workforce operates. We have to ensure that we don't make it any more cumbersome for them to do business here in Los Angeles and decide to leave for Atlanta. Los Angeles has a larger service sector economy so that the restaurant industry will be another sector that we have to take into consideration and making sure that we have solutions and deal with their concerns. And this is just the beginning, it's just the beginning of us beginning the conversation with our business community to engage you in every step of the way. We need to do that because we consider you key partners. I am confident that together we can do the very best that we can for working men and women in Los Angeles. So I ask you to move forward with this motion so that we can begin the work towards bringing paid parental leave to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Now Chair of our Ad Hoc Committee, Councilmember Krikorian. Councilmember Price?
Thank you, Councilman Rue, and thank you, Councilwoman Martinez and my colleagues, Councilwoman Farrow, Councilman Krikorian, and Councilwoman Rodriguez, and the advocates for being a part of this important discussion. As was mentioned earlier, the US is far behind other developing countries when it comes to the matter of parental leave. Many European countries offer parents six months bonding time, but here, our federal leaders have been unable to figure it out. That's why it's incumbent upon states and local governments to take, take up the fight and show the rest of the nation what's possible. No parent should have to face losing a job simply because they need time to bond with their baby. Research has shown that parental leave policies lead to a happier workforce and that the time is critical to a child's development. We also know that companies who have implemented a parental leave policy have seen higher work retention which positively impacts their business and ultimately the economy. Of course, we have some details to work out and I look forward to discussing this issue with the community and businesses and my colleagues, but as a first step, I'm happy to support moving this motion forward today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and I want to remind the audience, for those who want to speak, you have to sign up for a public comment card. And what I'm going to do, since we only have one agenda item, you don't have to sign up twice, if you just sign up for general public comment, I'm going to give everybody two minutes. So it's pretty much everyone signed up twice. So if you haven't signed up yet and you want to speak, please sign up now. Okay? So, before, yeah, so before I take the comments, Mr. CLA, if you could read it into the record, please?
Sure. Item, motion Rodriguez, Rue, Price, and Martinez relative to the paid parental leave ordinance.
Thank you. So I'm gonna call up the items and I'm gonna give everyone two minutes for both your item number one as well as public comment, okay? So Eli Lippman, and then after Eli is going to be Armando Flores, then Eric Previn.
Hello, Councilmen, Councilmembers, hello. Oh, where did Councilmember Martinez left? Okay, she's here. All right, oh, I gotta get going. Hi, Eli Lippman, you probably know me as Commissioner Lippman. I'm Vice President of the Bond Commission. However, I'm not here obviously as a commissioner. I'm actually here because I am the organizer of the LA Dads Group. We are the only all dads group, playgroup in Los Angeles. We welcome dads of all kinds, no matter where they come from, as long as they're involved in their children's lives. And we have over 1,000 members throughout LA County. We're actually part of a national network of dads groups, 33 around the country and in Canada now, so we're global, of tens of thousands of dads who want to have an opportunity to spend more time with their families. And so I'm here today to say I support this proposal and I have 1,000 dads who are not here today because they're with their kids, standing behind me to mobilize on this issue. And we, we're doing this because it's important both for the family, for the kids, and for our partners, to have the time to spend with their family. And I, I was a beneficiary of it when my wife was sick and when we had our kids, being able to get paid leave from the state. And so expansion of this is critical. I want you to be able to say that Los Angeles is the most kid-friendly city, big city, in the United States of America, and we can do this by passing a proposal like this. It's going to bring jobs to the neighborhood, it's going to bring jobs to our communities because people want that time off and it's a great recruitment tool. That's why major businesses that we're working with like Dove Men Plus Care, Google, and others have these policies because they understand that it actually is better for recruitment, better for retention of staff, and it's better for business overall. So let's look at the models in Europe, they actually use an insurance model and I think if we use that model, it'll be pro-business, pro-community, pro-neighborhoods, pro-parents. So I welcome this conversation, please keep me involved and happy to be an advocate. You may have seen my article in the LA Daily News, me and my kid at the LA Zoo, we had a good time with the reporter there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lippman, and we love the zoo. Armando Flores, Eric Previn, and then we're gonna have Eli Longneck, Longnecker.
Good afternoon. Armando Flores with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, FICA. Businesses understand the importance of new parents bonding with their infant children and supporting employees who are parents. California state law provides extensive protections for new parents, including partial pay and job protection to allow new mothers to heal from birth and for new parents to bond with their babies. Most businesses go beyond statutory protections and work with their employees by allowing them to work from home, work part-time, choose more flexible hours or other accommodations. FICA's board has developed some guiding principles to ensure that new parents are protected while businesses can continue to be competitive with other parts of the state and country. Paid parental leave should continue to be funded by a payroll tax on employees. Employers pay additional overtime or temporary employee costs and funding leave via an employee payroll tax splits the burden between employers and employees. The burden to demonstrate compliance should not be onerous, especially for businesses that choose to provide more generous leave policies than are mandated. New paid parental leave policies should exempt small businesses employing fewer than 50 full-time equivalent employees or nonprofit organizations who are disproportionately impacted by employees being out of, out on extended leave. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric Previn, last chance, Eric. Okay, we're gonna take him off. Eli Longneck. And then after that will be Rachel Torres and Diamond Lee.
Hi, I'm Eli Longnecker, but it's a silly name, I know. I'm here representing Kiwa, the Creighton Immigrant Workers Alliance, and I'm here to support the motion by Councilmember Rue and Martinez. Kiwa is one of the oldest worker center, nonprofit worker centers in the nation and one of our member leaders, Carmen Ruiz, is, she wanted to share her niece's story. She, her niece worked as a house cleaner before having her first child. She delivered her baby by C-section and needed eight weeks to recover. Her employer of five years said that she could take three days off and so after two weeks off that she took, she was fired and her employer had already hired her replacement. This is the reality of paid parental leave for immigrant workers in low-wage industries, so just three days, right, after a C-section. So Kiwa urges that the policy incorporate four elements to be friendly for low-wage workers. One is job protection so that workers have a job to return to. Two is protection from retaliation. Three, a robust multilingual outreach plan to reach LA's most vulnerable workers. And four, a parental leave specialist in the enforcement unit given the complex policy implementation. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Rachel Torres, Diamond Lee afterwards.
Good afternoon, my name's Rachel Torres. I'm the Deputy Political and Civil Rights Director with United Food and Commercial Workers, Local 770. On behalf of our over 30,000 members stretching from San Luis Obispo to San Pedro, we'd like to thank the authors of the motion, Councilmembers Rue and Martinez, and the committee chairs for scheduling the meeting and helping to move this discussion forward. Paid parental and family leave is considered a human right by most developed countries. Like so many policies affecting working people in the retail industries, our federal leadership refuses to act and so we need to move this policy here first. Retail workers struggle with constant erratic schedules, making care for a family member extremely difficult with fears of retaliation and loss of income. We need both a fair work week with advanced notice of schedules and paid leave so that families can be with each other during the most intense and important times of their lives and not go into poverty or lose their jobs. We strongly recommend the approval of this motion and urge the committees to move the matter forward to full City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Diamond Lee and then Adjoa Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Diamond and this is my colleague, Adjoa Jones. We are grateful to be here and we want to thank you, Councilmember Rue and Martinez, for putting this motion forward and for the committee for reviewing this. We're really appreciative of this opportunity. We represent the SPA 6 and 8, so the South LA County Area African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Community Action Team. So we're the lead organizers and facilitators of this and so we're really here on behalf of this coalition to really put forth the needs of African-American and Black women and the importance of this in really addressing infant and maternal mortality in our region.
We thank you again because this is very important as Black women in our nation suffer their rate of death by pregnancy-related complications and that's what up until a year after delivery is 243%. And so it is imperative that we provide this paid family leave because I myself have had colleagues within Department of Public Health and Health Services who've had to rush back from work, from home in order to be at work for fear of losing their job or fear of someone moving them into another place. I myself am a grandmother and mother and my adult child as well was released from employment for using family leave for my grandson who has, I'm trying to think, Down Syndrome. And so I just want to express the imperative of this. We have this community action team in South LA, that is the first of its kind, to look at ways in which to reduce the stress upon African-American women and women, all women who are pregnant and parenting and their families. So we thank you again and we're hopeful that this will move forward to completion.
And we also want to emphasize job protection and anti-discrimination policy as well to protect mothers because our work is centered in racial equity and so just want to add that.
Thank you. Next we'll have Melissa Akoba followed by Darby Saxby.
Thank you, Councilmembers Rue, Martinez, who has just left us, and all the other council members here on the committee. My name is Melissa Akoba and I am the Legislative Coordinator for the California Work and Family Coalition. Our statewide membership includes worker centers and unions, legal services organizations, healthcare providers, and others whom you will hear from today. We passed the first paid family leave law in the nation which became effective in 2004 and since then we have worked to ensure that all workers have equitable access to the time they need to care for their own health, the health of a loved one, or to bond with a new child through community education and outreach and through legislative advocacy. I'm also the Policy Director for Maternal Mental Health Now and can speak to the importance of paid parental leave and enabling low-income parents who live paycheck to paycheck to have the time they need to heal, to support the healthy development of infants and to mitigate stressors, including those that are financially related that can burden familial relationships during a physically and emotionally vulnerable time. In both capacities, I have encountered several workers who have had to choose between a paycheck and their own health. New moms who have returned to work just days after giving birth when their bodies have not fully healed and patients who delay care because they cannot survive off of a partial paycheck and so on. As a coalition, we try to reach these workers to inform them of their rights to paid family leave and while we recently increased the wage replacement rate for paid leave under AB 908 sponsored by Jimmy Gomez, there are many cases in which workers are still unable to access those benefits. One, because they cannot afford it. Two, they do not have job protection. Three, chosen family or those related by blood or affinity have been left out. And four, it is disproportionately more difficult for new immigrant and low-income workers to navigate a complicated application process. Paid parental leave will go a long way in alleviating the financial burden of low-income families and this is why we are so grateful for this motion. On behalf of the coalition, I ask that the council also investigate other barriers by including caregivers.
Wrap it up, sorry.
Okay. Who are also covered under paid family leave by including chosen family and guarding against employer retaliation, job protection, and effective education and outreach, I ask for your approval of this motion and urge you to move this matter to the full City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Previn, I called you earlier but I see that you're here, I'll let you come on up. We're doing two minutes, both a minute for public comment and a minute for the item.
Right, so I'll speak, I'll spend one minute saying how much I appreciate the idea of family paid leave, which is what I think you're bringing and we're looking at that. That is a no-brainer. We, you know, this is a society where we like it to have an opportunity for not just mothers but also fathers to have some time with children and to be able to do that without going under is an enormous benefit. And the insurance, you know, if you have insurance covers the, but it is an astonishing financial impact on people, so to be able to not worry about that is just a great thing and I just want to applaud you for leaning in that direction. It's a great area. So I'll just wrap it up with the leave, I've got, I see Mr. Price is here from the, from the other meeting. We're running the meetings a little later in the day, which is your prerogative, obviously. It's a good opportunity to, to meet, but it's also tricky when schedules change and people schedule, I think Rodriguez has put her Public Safety Committee meeting in the late afternoon, and these are under your jurisdiction.
Yeah, if you could just talk about.
Well, which meeting is this? You see what I'm saying? This is two or several meetings, so we're just trying to pay attention and it's hard because when you have a variety of characters on one agenda, it gets tricky. So I know you're allowed, there's a Brown Act, I'm familiar with it as you know, but I just would like to make the comment that when the meetings have items that are so important at times of the day, I mean, you could argue that it's a good time of the day, but just consider that when you take those.
Yeah, you really have to focus on the item at hand.
Yeah, that is the item at hand. Why, it's in a special push-together meeting of groups, right. So I understand that's an efficiency thing from your end, I'm just speaking from the back, from the rest of us, it may or may not be the best way to draw the kinds of commentary you want. I know you want to hear from everybody, so we do appreciate that. And I know you don't always want to hear from everybody, but I say it just because I'm nice.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn. Could we get Darby Saxby and Katie Waters-Smith, please?
Hi, I'm Darby Saxby. I'm a psychologist and a professor at the University of Southern California and I study couples transitioning to parenthood. I'm also a mom, so I know firsthand this is a critical transformative time for the health of the family. It's rare to think about a single public investment that can prevent mental illness, reduce obesity and chronic disease risk, and dramatically improve child welfare and child developmental outcomes, yet this policy promises to do all of the above. One in five perinatal women reports significant depression or anxiety and low-income women are at the highest risk. Half of postpartum women in Los Angeles County report significant postpartum weight retention, which may be an inflection point for lifelong obesity. We know that breastfeeding reduces the risk of postpartum weight retention but is inaccessible to women who aren't able to take time off after work. Facilitating time off after childbirth has the promise to reduce health disparities and promote health across the board. The fact is these policies are expensive, but we're already paying for the impact on the economy. When we think about the diseases that we're failing to prevent, we think about the stress and the way in which we're undermining children's development. Thanks for considering this important initiative.
Thank you. Katie Waters-Smith and then followed by Manuel Villanueva.
Hi, thank you to Councilmembers Rue and Martinez for authoring this motion and to the committee chairs for scheduling this important meeting. My name is Katie Waters-Smith, I'm an international board-certified lactation consultant and a volunteer with Breastfeed LA, our local breastfeeding task force. As a lactation consultant, I support new families as they learn to breastfeed and I love my job because breastfeeding is amazing. Infants who are not breastfed have higher rates of asthma, allergies, ear infections, diabetes, obesity, and sudden infant death syndrome. Mothers who do not breastfeed have higher rates of breast cancer, ovarian and thyroid cancer, as well as diabetes and heart disease. Despite the well-documented importance of breastfeeding, there are stark disparities in breastfeeding rates by race, ethnicity, income, geography, and other factors, and we need policy change to address these disparities. In my work, I wish I could tell you it was just one or two people who told me I want to breastfeed but I can't because I have to go back to work too soon, but I've lost count. It's just countless parents, the most common reason I hear why people can't breastfeed. I've also seen mothers and fathers leave the hospital every day to go to work while their baby is in intensive care and then come back to the hospital every night to be with their baby. When California initially passed paid family leave, the median duration of breastfeeding increased from five to 11 weeks for those on higher income jobs and from five to nine weeks in lower income jobs. Every day of breastfeeding matters for both the breastfeeding parent and the breastfed infant's lifelong health. We all deserve to be present with our loved ones during life's most important moments and I encourage the committee to approve this motion and move this matter forward to the LA City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel Villanueva and then followed by Donna Benton.
I want to first thank you, David Rayo and Ms. Martinez for passing this motion. My name is Manuel Villanueva and I'm the Director of the Restaurant Opportunity Center in Los Angeles. I advocate for restaurant workers for their well-being and improving their, their working conditions. I once was myself a restaurant worker and I'm a proud member of the LGBT community. I am a caregiver for my parents. I have a dad that suffers from. I have a dad that, um, suffers from, uh, kidney disease and diabetes. He has to go to dialysis every other day. Uh, when I was a restaurant worker, I used to make $200 and 30 cents, $200 and 30, $230 a week, and only have one day off. And so I had to wheel him to, uh, the dialysis because we didn't have transportation back in the day. And on my day off, I would just go to the food bank and get food for my, for both of my parents. Uh, when I was married and I was, um, I had the opportunity to serve, um, and the restaurant industry and, and the community, um, I got married to my partner. Uh, when I was asked, when, when I asked for time off to take care of him, they told me that that was a fake marriage and that that wasn't, be gonna be recognized as a family member. And so I'm here to tell you, and I'm looking for my community to recognize extended family because as immigrants as well, we choose our families because some of us are separated from our own families back home, and we create our friendships and fraternities and colleagues. And so recognizing that is very important, and also job protection and retaliation, protection against, uh, us if we want to take this time off. It's really hard to prove when you're being retaliated against because then again, we're in an ad-wheel employment, and so, um, it'll be really cool for us to be able to, um, have something with more clarity and a clear pathway for us to make a claim. And I have respect and any tender would please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker will be Donna Benton.
Hi, and thank you, Councilmember Martinez and Rue, for this opportunity to speak today. Um, and I'm also in your district, Councilmember. I just saw you on Saturday. Yeah, at a meeting. So, um, I really wanted to emphasize, I'm, um, at the USC Family Caregiver Support Center, and although I know we're talking about infant bonding today, um, about 25% of family members are also caring for an older adult, and they have this kind of sandwiched generation so that I think one of the things I'd like to re, just remind you is to maybe consider family caregivers, um, as a reason to maybe extend this proposal to that population also. Um, because when you're trying to deal stress on both ends, we find the caregivers already have an increased risk for depression and social isolation, and that risk for the caregivers that we work with, it's about 50% of caregivers actually are assessed as being depressed. And we have quite a few that are both doing parent care and older adult care. San Francisco law, um, did, and I know, I don't want to say we're always like San Francisco, but it did include, uh, family caregivers. So, um, I think that that's a real important, and we're going to see an increase beyond the 25% because we have an aging population, so this is going to become more common, and so we don't always have to come back to the table. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so very much. That completes our public comment and, uh, list of speakers who signed up. Um, I'd like to now call up Aditi Fruwalo of the ACLU to come up to the podium to kick off our discussion.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Aditi Fruwalo. I am a staff attorney with the ACLU of Southern California. I am also a proud member of the Work and Family Coalition. Um, my colleagues at ACLU and the Work and Family Coalition have long been in this fight. They have been working to get Califor, they worked to get California's paid family leave passed in 2002, so I am excited to be here today to continue working with you all to expand the protections that we have and make sure that they work for all Californians. Thank you so much for inviting me to present today. Thank you to Councilmembers Rue and Martinez for your leadership, and to the entire council for taking up this critical issue. I've been asked to give a broad overview of paid family leave in California, so I'm going to try to cover some of the basics of the law. It is a complicated law. Um, there's complicated series of laws that overlap and come together and sometimes correspond and sometimes don't, so I'm just going to cover some of the basics. But it certainly won't be comprehensive, and I'm happy to follow up later if necessary. So first, I want to start federally, as several council members have actually mentioned. As of today, there is no federal paid family leave program in the U.S. There are only two countries in the world that do not have some form of a paid family leave program. It is the U.S. and Papua New Guinea. So we, um, several people in this room actually responded in 2002 and got paid family leave passed in California. That law was implemented in 2004, and at that time, it was the only paid family leave program in the U.S. As of today, there are five states that have paid family leave in addition to California. So that is New Jersey, New York, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and Washington State. Washington DC also has its own paid family leave program. So when, I want to kind of separate, um, what we, what we're talking about when we mean paid family leave. So there are two separate types of leave that you can take when you are pregnant and postpartum, and then to bond. The two are pregnancy disability leave and then paid family leave. There are, they are separate leaves, they are sort of, they're processed separately, but they come from the same fund, but they're for two different purposes, so I want to talk about each separately. Um, and for both, I want to cover the purpose, the time off, job protection, and wage replacement. So the first is pregnancy disability leave. Um, that type of leave is for the pregnant person, the birth parent, and the purpose is because at some point in your pregnancy, it becomes difficult or impossible to work. Um, and so just, that is processed just like any other type of disability. You go to your physician, and your physician, you know, fills out the necessary paperwork to put you on disability leave. So it's processed just like regular disability leave, but it's pregnancy disability leave, so a separate law applies to that. Um, the time that you are on pregnancy disability leave depends, um, on the person. Every person is different, every pregnancy is different, um, but typically, it is about four weeks pre-partum, so before you have the baby, and six to eight, eight weeks postpartum. Six weeks for a regular childbirth, eight weeks for a cesarean section. The physician can, um, uh, can put in for longer time if there are medical complications, but it's generally about four weeks before, six to eight weeks after. For job protection, 12 weeks of that amount of time is job protected. Um, so that means that the pregnant person and the person who gave, just gave birth, um, is able to leave their job for 12 weeks, come back, and that same job has to be available for them. Um, and that is covered by the California Family Rights Act and the New Parent Act. The wage replacement, um, essentially for pregnancy disability leave, you get 60 to 70% of your wages replaced with an inverse relationship to how much you make. So if you make on the higher end, you get 60%, on the lower end, you get 70%. Most workers get 60%. Um, to get 70%, you have to be making about $21,000 annually or less. And the eligibility for this leave is essentially, if you are a worker in California who pays into the state disability insurance program, you get to take out of it. There are a lot of workers that do not pay into this program. Um, a lot of public workers don't pay into it, independent contractors, um, you know, if you're self-employed and choose not to pay into it, then you don't get that benefit. But most workers in California pay into the system, so they get to take out. So that is pregnancy disability leave. The second type of leave is paid family leave. This is leave for all parents. It does not matter if you're the birth parent or not, you are eligible for this type of leave. It's also called bonding leave. The purpose is to take care of your newborn baby, um, whether that's by birth, adoption, or fostering, or to care for a sick family member. The amount of time is six weeks, and it can be taken intermittently, meaning that I could take a week today, go back to work for a month, take another week, go back to work for a month. It's just six weeks in the course of one year immediately after the baby is born. It is not job protected, and the wage replacement works exactly the same as pregnancy disability leave. So it's 60 to 70% of your wages are replaced, um, by the SDI fund. It comes out of the exact same fund as pregnancy disability, but it is processed separately. So the fund is paid for by employees. Um, essentially, employees put away, 1% of payroll tax goes to pay this fund, and 85% of this fund is, pays out to disability claims. That's not all pregnancy disability, it's all types of disability, but 85% goes to pay disability claims, 15% goes for paid family leave. Um, and I just want to talk about some of the benefits of paid family leave, um, why we had this in the first place, which several people spoke directly to. So some of this is going to be just reiterating what they said, bringing it together. Um, I want to cover two major benefits. The first is the health of the parent and the baby, and the second is the positive impact on the labor market. So several studies have showed that paid family leave and bonding time improves maternal health and the health of the baby. It improves maternal health because people have better, um, they have time and, uh, the capacity to take care of themselves and their child. Studies have shown that it reduces rehospital, rehospitalization due to stress and depression, um, and it increases infant health because it reduces the number of hospital admissions, and it increases the amount of vaccinations that infants are able to get because there's time to actually take infants to the doctor and get done what they need to get done. It also increases the amount of time that babies can be breastfed, and as Katie from Breastfeed LA said, there are, you know, ample benefits, proven benefits to breastfeeding, including lowering risks of disease and infections. It also has, paid family leave also has a massive positive impact on the labor market. It increases labor force participation. That studies have shown that when employers have paid family leave programs, the workers are more likely to take it. They will actually leave the workforce for a period of time, but they're also more likely to come back. When there's not a paid family leave program, the workers will just have to quit and then not come back, or come back at a much later stage to a lower job. It also decreases the gender gap in the labor market because those workers that exit the labor market are almost always women. And it has been proven to, um, maintain job satisfaction for both employees and employers. So since paid family leave was introduced in California, 90% of surveyed California employers have reported positive effects on employee turnover, profitability, and productivity. So the proposal in front of you today is nearly identical to the one that was introduced and passed in San Francisco in 2016, the San Francisco Paid Parental Leave Ordinance. It was passed unanimously by the Board of Supervisors in April 2016, and it required employers to supplement the state's paid family leave benefits for six weeks. And the reason that that is critical, um, is because many people in Los Angeles would love to take paid family leave but simply cannot afford to do so. A 2011 survey found that 1/3 of Californians who are eligible for paid family leave don't apply from it, for it, because they cannot afford it. Um, and I have a quote from one of our members, Myra Lopez in Riverside. "I work as a caretaker as a job, but I need paid time off to take care of my own baby. The state's wage replacement helps with our bills, but it's not enough. Our family needs my full paycheck to make ends meet." So we can all be proud of California for pioneering paid family leave in the U.S., but only providing 60 to 70% of wages means that there are tens of thousands of Californians, mostly low-income, mostly people of color, many immigrants, who cannot afford to take this benefit. So I'm grateful that you're all looking into this issue and hope that we can work together to make paid family leave a reality for all Angelenos. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. That was very, very informative. Uh, but actually, can you, do you mind staying there, just in case some of the members have any questions that could, that's specifically for you? Um, now for member questions, I want to start with, um, the Health Committee, then go to the Economic Development Committee, because Councilman Price doubles up on both, and then we'll, uh, end up, end with the Ad Hoc Committee, um, first round, and then if there's any additional discussion, we could, uh, open it up. So, um, uh, Councilman, um, O'Farrell, yes? If you have any questions or comments?
Thank you so much. First of all, uh, Ms. Fruwalo, thank you for that, uh, presentation, very, very thorough, uh, and answered some questions that I had as well. Uh, one question I have for you, based on what you've just said, is in relation to the first, um, pregnancy leave, the disability leave that you mentioned, is that at all funded through payroll tax, like the paid family leave is?
Yes, it actually comes from the exact same fund, and so the 1% that's taken out from employees' payroll taxes all goes to fund state disability insurance.
Same fund. Perfect, thank you. That was just one blink that I had. And then, in terms of the motion itself, I think that there is, uh, perhaps an unintentional sort of, uh, gap here, uh, and, and that is, you covered very clearly the advantage of doing this paid family leave in, specific to Los Angeles. And then in the first moving clause of the motion, it talks about, uh, supplemental compensation for up to 18 weeks equal to the difference, and I, and I think that means the additional six weeks that isn't covered by the pregnancy disability and the paid family leave. Is that, is that correct? Or is that 18 additional weeks in top of everything else that this, that this city would require of all employers?
Well, I, I could answer that, since I'm the, the maker of the motion. Um, so what we did was, uh, current in the state of California, it's, uh, the pregnancy disability leave is basically four-week, it's qual, uh, you could qualify for four, four weeks pre, uh, pre, um, um, birth, and then six to eight weeks postpartum, depending on, obviously, if you had a C-section or not.
Got that.
So four plus eight is 12, and then, uh, you could also qualify for an additional six weeks of paid family leave. So technically, the current state law, you could qualify for 18 full weeks.
And I understand all that, Mr. Chair, that's not lost on me, but what isn't clear is the first moving clause, would it mean that the city would, just like San Francisco, um, offer or, or require the additional six weeks that adds up to 18 weeks? Or are we requiring 18 additional weeks? I think it's.
Right.
I think if it's commensurate with San Francisco, it's the six additional weeks.
Well, so we're starting at 18, so, um, we, so it says, um, up to 18 weeks. So San Francisco, it's my understanding, they started at up to 18 weeks, and they compromised that six weeks.
Okay.
So, um, whether we follow the, exactly the San Francisco model and, um, ultimately decide after we get the report back from the CLA, CAO, and, and we do a lot of working group discussions with the Chambers of Commerce and everybody else involved, if we ultimately want to decide that we want to go with six weeks, or two weeks, or 18 weeks, or six months, that's, you know, that will be this body's, um.
Okay. All right. So, but literally, the moving clause is not then commensurate with what San Francisco passed? And that's fine, I just wanted it for clarification.
Yes, yes.
So the questions I have, uh, I'm glad that, uh, first of all, this is a no-brainer. We need to support, um, um, all of the, um, benefits to the, the necessary health and well-being and bonding of a newborn or an adopted child. We want to encourage more adoptions, uh, and I'm in line with all of the anti-discrimination stuff that happens. The, uh, former restaurant worker who was discriminated against for, for his orientation by the employer, the, the whole C-section, three days, I mean, all that absolutely needs to be dealt with, and it's a no-brainer. It's a matter of how we get there in, in Los Angeles in relation to, uh, taking into consideration small businesses, small business impacts, et cetera. So, uh, I, I want to ask about, um, collective bargaining agreements. Uh, for example, the entertainment industry has collective bargaining agreements, and they have their own processes for dealing with family leave, extended family leave, et cetera. Uh, it's a very dynamic business where it's not a regular work schedule, et cetera. So that should be taken into consideration, I think, in the report back, and perhaps you already have an instruction for that?
We don't, but if you want to wordsmith that while we go around, we could, um, include that in the amendment.
All right, yeah. I, I'm going to ask for, for that to, to come back.
Yeah.
And then, um, uh, and, and I'm, I'm, your, your presentation again was terrific, and in terms of paid family leave and pregnancy disability leave, do we, are we aware of any, uh, upcoming changes or improvements in state law with this, with the new governor and the new legislature that we need to be mindful of, that you're aware of?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. There are actually several, this new governor is very, um, excited about paid family leave and excited about expanding it, and so there are four or five, um, paid family leave amendments, additions in the state legislature right now, in addition to the governor's proposal. Um, this would operate separately from that, and presumably, if a wage replacement of 100% did get passed, then that, you know, essentially, the, the only thing that would directly conflict with the wage replacement provision of this ordinance is that there is, um, one bill in the state legislature that allows for full wage replacement for anyone who makes $100,000 or less. That would certainly conflict with this, but it is not, they're not mutually exclusive, and it wouldn't preempt this. Um, and so I think that, you know, the, this can coexist, and also, it's not certain that it's going to get passed. There are so many different types of paid family leave programs that have been, um, proposed that we just don't know what's going to make its way out.
Right.
But that was a really exciting time.
But it is, it's perfect. It's, it's great to have this new progressive governor who really under, I think, understands things in a fundamentally different way. But it's something to be mindful of in relation to not duplicating efforts and getting a larger benefit from the state. Uh, so that's something to consider as we move forward in terms of the balance, uh, that we can strike. Um, and then, would this apply, and this is, no answer yet, but this is something that we need to consider. Would the city paid family leave only apply to private industry, or would also apply to, apply to public sector jobs, including the city of Los Angeles? We, that, those are things that we need to consider.
Yeah, and that's, it, in the motion, it asks for that.
Okay. And then, um, you mentioned the very challenging and, uh, behemoth of the application processes for, uh, families who need to access these funds already. Wouldn't it be nice if we could have some sort of concierge service to help people with that, so that those, uh, fundings don't, those funding possibilities don't go unanswered for people who need it?
Yes, absolutely. So I think, I mean, several of the advocates in this room actually work pretty closely with the EDD to try to make this process as streamlined and as easy to understand as possible. as possible. So we have quarterly calls with the EDD to sort of, you know, walk them through what problems we're seeing on the ground, and the EDD has changed, has, you know, adapted, listened, and changed many of its processes. And so now you can do it both by paper and online. It's going to be in several different languages. The forms are going to be available in a lot of different forms, and they're trying to get more funding in order to raise awareness about this, because that is a huge component of who ends up actually applying and being approved. So, yes, I mean, I think that that is an excellent point, and hopefully, that can also be something that is discussed as part of this ordinance as well, because awareness raising, especially in communities that are low-income and immigrants, is an extremely important component of this.
I'm so glad to hear that the processes have been refined, and yes, maybe we can fill the gaps there as well with this, taking this section. And lastly, Mr. Chair, San Francisco included the requirement for large employers, so we would need to find out if that's 50 or more, or what that means, and would that simply, and would that also be the same rationale that we take in Los Angeles? I'm happy to write these things down, but I'm looking forward to having these questions answered and moving forward with helping give relief to the families who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. And yes, we have that in the motion, as well as an amendment that I have regarding the size of the actual small to mid-sized businesses. But the labor piece one, my staff is going to be working with your staff to make sure we include that. And I just want to reiterate one point that you said about the governor's new proposal. Yes, we are super excited about that. It is, particularly the fourth whereas clause specifically alludes to that, but in particular, it is our understanding that, but again, we could be wrong, and if it does everything that we want to, there's no need to reinvent the wheel. But I think he's probably looking at expanding from 18 weeks to a longer time, still at 60, 70%, but we don't know. But we're, whatever he does, we're excited, because we're on the same boat, and we're all moving towards the same direction, but we're very careful where.
Thank you. And especially if there is a benefit and a relief that is state-funded that could help so that, you know, we can leverage our dollars better, especially when it relates to small businesses. So, Councilmember?
Yeah, I just want to actually build off of what Councilman Maru just said. The governor's proposal, what he is looking for is actually an expansion of time, not an expansion of wage replacement. And so he is looking, right now, we have six weeks, he is looking for six months for the child, which would amount to approximately three months per parent, unless the parents want to allocate their time differently. And so, but there are, you know, the governor has a proposal, EDD is looking to do some interesting things, and then there are several, several Assembly members and senators who also have introduced, and so we just don't know what it's going to end up looking like at the end, but the governor's primary priority is actually an expansion of time, not an expansion of wage replacement, which is why this would be really critical.
Thank you for that, DT. And yes, hopefully, we're wrong, and the governor actually wants to do 100%, that'll be a, that'll be a much welcome thing, but yes, this is, we're focusing on the wage replacement part, the actual gap of 30 to 40% that's right now unfunded. So I want to turn it over to Councilmember Price, who is also on the, who is on the committee, as well as Chair of Economic Development.
I think the conversation has been very good, and thank you for your very informative presentation. Just one question, Mr. Chairman. I know this measure is modeled after San Francisco's efforts. What other cities have been progressive and forward-thinking on this topic, cities or states?
So Berkeley has an ordinance proposed right now that is similar to San Francisco. New York City has one that's very similar to New York State, but provides the full wage replacement, and then Washington D.C.
In-law or proposed? In-law?
In-law. Yes, and then that's it, and then D.C. And that's it.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Price, are, the motion asks for a full analysis of all the different iterations that exist currently, both in the public realm, cities and states, as well as the private realm. So we're also going to be asking private, what the current private businesses, public, nonprofit, as well as private businesses are doing in paid parental leave policy as well. So get all of that economic analysis, so that, today, we're instructing the departments, and on top of that, most importantly, we're going to be working with all the different stakeholders, everybody that we see here today, but most importantly, the business community, so we could get their concerns and their take, and so we could analyze this fully before the report is all done. And when the report comes back, then we'll be able to discuss more robustly with actual facts and figures. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues, I think, for all of your insightful contributions to this conversation, and thank you for your presentation. I look forward to the ongoing conversation, especially, you know, with respect to how we incorporate some of the concerns that might be raised through our small businesses and the like. As a, as someone who was a working mom, kind of going through that process with a cesarean, it took several weeks before I could actually, you know, it was, I was grateful for having the opportunity to not have to worry about my employment situation at the time I was working for the city of Los Angeles, and so having that time to recuperate and then spend time with my son, 18 years later, I'm still in recovery from it, but it's, it's, you know, it was, it was a blessing not to have to worry about these types of circumstances, which so many families have to endure in our city, given the high cost of living that we have here. It's an important conversation that we should be starting. I'm glad we're ahead of Papua New Guinea, and I just, I look forward to the ongoing conversation to help flush out some of the details as it involves this policy, so that we make sure we don't have any unintended consequences with this, because it's such an important part of our larger economic conversation about sustaining our local economy here, and making sure that we strike the right balance to help provide those protections for these families, so that they can actually enjoy and build a strong family network is a critical part of how we assure the long-standing health and well-being of our kids in the city of Los Angeles. So thank you so much for engaging in this conversation, and I look forward to this ongoing process.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. And last, our Chair of the Ad Hoc Committee, Councilmember Paul Coria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and colleagues. I just wanted to make sure that I understand the current state of what you presented. The, under current paid family leave and current state disability, the entirety of the insurance pool is paid for by the employee now, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, under San Francisco's ordinance, the additional supplement is entirely paid for by the employer?
That's correct.
Okay. And how about in New York? What's the model there, on both of the sides of the equation?
Sorry, what do you mean by what's the model?
Well, I mean, I don't know if New York has an equivalent of state disability or state paid family leave.
Identical.
They're identical to California. So the beginning part is paid entirely by the employee, and then that supplemental add-on is paid for by the employer?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, and what Berkeley has proposed is the same.
Okay. And New York's ordinance was enacted when?
It was after California. I believe it was either, it was sometime between 2005, 2010.
Okay. Okay, I got so many notes here, I'm trying to make sensible questions out of it. You did, you mentioned that Governor Newsom was looking at extending time, but not necessarily increasing the percentage of pay. And I guess, you know, one of the things that I would think that we would want to review in our economic analysis of a potential ordinance would be that factor as well, because it's not clear to me what the most important factor in a person's willingness to, ability to return to work and maximize the benefit of leave might be. For some, it might be a longer duration; for some, it might be paying 100% for shorter duration. Depends on demographics, income level, type of industry, all sorts of factors. And so where we put our mandates, you know, on that spectrum, makes a significant difference, it seems to me, on that, you know, you mentioned the 1/3 of the people who don't currently take it. Likewise, if the governor is already considering that, and different legislators are already considering that, where they strike that balance may or may not have a preemptive effect on what we do. Because if they're considering that very factor and striking a balance in some place, I don't know whether, to what degree, local government will be left to be able to differ from that, so, in terms of imposing an employer mandate, which currently is not part of the scenario at all under state law. The legislature and the governor struck that balance, and they decided not to do an employer mandate. So I would want to make sure, Mr. Chair, that we have, as part of our report back, an analysis by the city attorney on, you know, whether there is any preemptive concern that we would have here. On the economic analysis, just, let me just throw out a few ideas, because I think you just mentioned, that we'll have a comprehensive economic analysis, it'll consider some of the other practices, some of the models. I assume that would include New York and San Francisco, because we have working models and we can evaluate. Just to be clear, though, that the language of the motion calls for evaluation and potential impacts to small business, I would think we would want to examine the impacts on all business, all employees of those businesses, to determine whether it has historically had or could potentially have, in particular industries, as Mr. O'Farrell mentioned, impacts on number of hours worked, discriminatory hiring practices, you know, at the front end, especially because paid family leave doesn't have job protection built in, whereas SDI does. What would be the mechanism that we ensure that a proposal like this doesn't have a discriminatory impact on younger workers and women? So I suspect that all of that, there's a huge body of information in San Francisco and New York and statewide here in California that we can draw upon, but I would want to make sure that the economic analysis is very deep and thorough and robust in those areas. And then, Kiwa mentioned, as I just said, job protection, discriminatory impact, retaliation, which is another, I have a feeling, you know, that would be a common, that would be something that we would have to be concerned about more often than we would like, and so we'd need to have some sort of enforcement mechanism to ensure that that's in place, which may or may not exist under state law. And then, how we do outreach to inform employers of, employees of their entitlement to this. Mr. O'Farrell mentioned different industries. I think the, the report back should look at different sectors and what potential impacts there may be, so we can consider that. And particularly, I noticed in San Francisco, the ordinance is limited, applies to employees who work as little as eight hours a week. So that raises significant issues for independent contractor-type of situations in the film and television industry, where, you know, they're technically, or the gig economy, where we're, they're supposedly independent contractors, but we all know they're employees, you know, how do we, how do we deal with that? Mr. Lipman mentioned a suggestion about providing an insurance model. I don't know if he meant something akin to SDI, you know, a local version of SDI, but I think we should consider different financing mechanisms like that, which would help alleviate some of the burden to employers and provide a robust, sustainable source of funding for this. One of the challenges, Mr. Chair, that we had when we initiated this effort for the city as an employer, is that it turns out that offering a benefit like this is negotiable, even though it is, in my view, something that we were unilaterally giving to our employees, it was still negotiable, and the reason for that is because the labor union might decide that it wants another benefit more than it wants this, and so it has to be negotiated. When we did minimum wage, the minimum, the local minimum wage increase, there was a significant question about whether or not employers that are covered by a collective bargaining agreement should be exempt from the minimum wage increase. And, well, and, well, but the same issue may very well apply with a mandate like this, and whether or not it could be imposed, even consistent with federal labor law, on an organized workplace. So I'd like CAO and CLA to report back on that issue as well. Let's see if I have everything. Oh, social enterprises, in addition to industry sectors, again, building on the minimum wage increase that we did here, we're still hearing from folks who do job training programs for the hard-to-hire, social enterprise programs that are of great public benefit, but also benefit the people who are, the participants, that they're having a great deal of difficulty being able to provide the same level of service because of the minimum wage increase, and we had discussed but didn't enact an exemption at that time for social enterprises and some others, and so I would want to make sure that, and I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I think you already anticipated that by providing for nonprofit organizations, so that's already in the motion. I think that that about covers it. So sorry if that was a little stream of consciousness, but I think as long as the reports back encompass those issues, I think we'll be able to address all of those when it comes back.
I got a lot of it, and like I said in the opening, this is the beginning of the discussion, and we will have ample opportunities for each one of our offices to meet with Adi Fruitwala, who has such immense information, as well as all the different groups here, and all the groups that are not represented here. So, and many of the things that have been said have, I'm not going to read the existing motion, but I'm going to read in the amendments, which covers a lot, as well as, and I think, and, and just to let you know, the outreach part is covered in the fourth part of the motion, but, well, first off, members, any other questions?
I do have, I'm sorry. One other specific question, actually. In the San Francisco ordinance, I was, I was a little unclear when I read about it. It seems like paid family leave has a much broader reach than the San Francisco ordinance did in its applicability. You can take paid family leave for, to take care of an ill relative, for elder care, for all sorts of other reasons, and as you mentioned, you can take it sporadically. Does the San Francisco supplementing ordinance, is it limited only to child bonding, or does it encompass the other areas of paid family leave as well?
I believe it encompasses everything that the California state law does.
Okay.
And I actually just quickly want, you said so many great things, I touched on several important points and reasons why this area of law is really complicated and needs to be carefully done, and I sort of just want to respond to two of them. I mean, you said that there's, there needs to be more analysis about whether wage replacement or extension of time is more important, and we would say that both are critically important for very different reasons, which I know that you agree with, and I just want to highlight that the reason that wage replacement is so important specifically for Los Angeles is that low-income people cannot take paid family leave if they're only receiving 60 to 70% of their income. They just can't, and we know that they don't. And that's, and that is, that's more important than in LA than it is in other places. I mean, we've seen the numbers, we've seen the EDD numbers of who is filing these claims. LA, for a city of this size, is filing significantly fewer claims than other cities are, and we know that that's because they either don't know about it and/or they can't take it.
Well, and those are two very different policy issues, whether they don't know about it, or whether they can afford to take it and for how long.
Absolutely.
And that's why I would expect that an economic analysis that looks at San Francisco and New York would be able to see very clear before and after data. You would see that before we went to 100% pay in San Francisco, there was a larger percentage of people not taking advantage of it, and that was remedied after the fact. But I think we need to see that to find where the, you know, to find that the benefit that we're hoping to achieve has in fact been achieved in the model that we're pursuing.
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Is that it? Okay. So, like I said, this is going to be an ongoing discussion. So I think I got a lot of the amendments in here. First thing I want to do is I want to replace the second whereas to instruct the CLA and COO to report back in 30 days, which is the most biggest change, with options and recommendations for the commission of an independent economic analysis on a potential paid parental leave program, including but not limited to the release of a task order solicitation to on-call contractors through the Office of Economic Analysis, or release of a RFP with targeted mailings to firms and/or institutions with sufficient economic and social research experience and capacity to perform the analysis. Now, in addition to that, I want to add in these amendments, that the analysis should include a survey and evaluation of existing private and public sector, including industries that have collective bargaining agreements, and I'm just going to keep it more loose, so it could be, I'm not going to specify, paid parental leave programs in the city of Los Angeles. And then, second one amendment will be a And then, second one amendment would be a citywide and industry-specific analysis to determine the universe of potentially eligible employees based on age and demographic characteristics, among others. That'll give us a lot more information. Three, an evaluation of potential risks, potential impacts, risks, and costs to large, mid-size, and small employers and independent contractors. I think you both brought that up.
Can you just throw in there, and their employees as well?
And their...
There may be changes in hours, for example.
Okay, and their employees. Four, options to mitigate potential risks and costs, including but not limited to exemptions for small businesses and/or nonprofit organizations, modifications to the city's business tax, an expansion of short-term disability insurance coverage, and the development of an opt-in program intended to pool risk and costs associated with a potential paid parental leave program. Five, report back on currently proposed changes in state law and existing state law. I'm just going to specifically spell that out, even though it's kind of in here. Six, also report back on discriminatory impacts, retaliation, and monitoring and enforcement mechanisms and costs. Seven, ask the city attorney to work with CAO and the CLA on preemption issues, right? Preemption issues? I'm just going to leave it broad, so it could encompass a lot.
Perfect.
And I'm going to add one more here, which is a pet peeve. I don't know how much we could do about this, but look into, look into how we could urge that, and we could wordsmith this better, changing the name of the pregnancy disability leave statement. Because, you know, I just don't like the fact that a pregnancy is considered disability, you know, so, and that's, that's one of a lesser issue, but I just want to add that in there as well, since we're being so comprehensive.
Mr. Chair, how about we change it to pregnancy miracle leave?
Yeah. That's more of a state jurisdiction, but I still want, just, maybe we could come up with some sort of better statement on that. So, I think that covers everything, members? Is that all right with you guys? And when the report comes back, obviously, if we want a little bit more discussion on it, or something else to be covered, we could always do so. So, with that, I'd like to recommend that we approve the amended motion, as well as each of the recommendations presented today, and move the matter forward to the full city council.
Very good.
No objections, so moved, great.
Objection, thank you.
And we did general public comment.
We don't have quorum in my committee, so that'll be a recommendation to the chair.
Yes, thank you so much for clarifying that. For the ad hoc committee, there isn't a quorum, so it will be pushed along as a chair's...
And Mr. Price, just for the record, for your committee as well?
Well, they have quorum.
No, I mean, as the, as the recommendation for the committee, yeah. Just, I just wanted to say it for the record, as opposed to no objection to...
Say it for the record?
Because he's on both committees, yeah.
Great. Thank you. There is no other business before us, so thank you so very much. This is the start of a lengthy discussion.